Well, I think at this point we'll hear from the folks who have taken the time to come here. And you have my list here. All right. Todd Liljunkquist. Why don't you introduce yourself and tell you who you represent or why you're here?
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chair, and committee members. Appreciate the opportunity to come here today. My name is Todd Liljunkquist and I represent the Minnesota Multi-Housing Association. It's the trade association for rental property owners, managers, developers in the state. We have approximately 2,000 members in the state. I'd like to thank the committee for allowing me the opportunity. We do support the rule change. From our perspective, the rule doesn't actually substantively change the current rule that much. In fact, it further restricts agent representation if it does go into an evidentiary hearing. There have been at least two Court of Appeals decisions stating that fact. The Hinkley Square decision, which was a published decision, and the Walnut Towers decision, which was unpublished, both of them stated that there are two exceptions to the attorney representation requirement for business entities. One is in conciliation court and one is in the housing courts. So the courts have recognized this exception through the rules. This rule does provide some safeguards in that it does, if it does go to an evidentiary hearing, it does require attorney representation, which we believe is a good compromise proposal. And I'll conclude. I do have written comments that I've submitted and I don't want to blabber the point replicating those comments. But any change that would require attorney representation, those costs would largely be borne by the residents of the rental housing, which in the current state of the affordable housing crisis, as we've seen all through the media, we think that this is a good compromise approach. Thank you.
All right. Very good. Thank you.
Either the lease agreement says so or additional costs of doing business, which could be distributed onto, if the business owners are responsible for paying those costs and hiring counsel, it increases the cost of doing business, which can impact the...
It could be indirectly.
Not necessarily directly. They could have that as part of their lease agreement, that they could be responsible for attorney's fees. And our lease, we have a standard lease and it does provide for that. Attorney...
Do you also have any questions for Mr. Liljunkquist? If not, thank you. Drew Schaefer.
Thanks for the opportunity to speak today. My name's Drew Schaefer. I'm the executive director of Mid-Minnesota Legal Aid. We have offices in Minneapolis, St. Cloud, and Wilmer serving people on poverty law issues. And so we happen to serve Hennepin County in eviction cases. And Hennepin County is the venue where the most number of eviction cases are filed each year, so that's why I'm here. I'm here to speak because, this is not abstract and theoretical, this committee looked at this issue in 2009. Nicolet restoration is the law of Minnesota. And specifically looked at that case in line with a proposal at the time to do something similar, to explicitly authorize non-attorney agents to appear for corporate business entities. Now, we have the record here before us. When the committee first enacted this rule back in 1991, there was a reference that the unauthorized practice of law was a consideration at the time. If you look at the text of the rule, I want to correct a misimpression that I think has flown through a lot of the record that you have before you. There is nothing in the text of this rule that says anything about corporations appearing in Hennepin County District Court or Ramsey County District Court without counsel. It says agents can appear for principals. The word corporation, limited liability company, business entity does not appear in the text of Rule 603. The two cases Mr. Liljunkquist referenced in his brief remarks just now came out of St. Louis County, I believe, and Blue Earth County, if I recall correctly. And one of the cases is unpublished and in the other case, there was some dicta that referenced 603 authorizing agents to appear in Hennepin and Ramsey County District Courts, but it's just not in the text of the rule. And this committee, and I encourage you to go back and look at your administrative files and records from the debate and discussion back then, because everything holds true today, just as it did then, that it is not good policy to have different rules and laws that apply in Hennepin County District Court and Ramsey County District Court. The housing courts in those district courts are, you are in district court when you are in a housing court proceeding. You're not in, you know, you're not outside of district court. It is a district court proceeding. All the rules and procedures apply except as modified by these rules. And to make a change like that in the two district courts in the state with the largest number of eviction cases is substantial. So you would, with this proposal, be changing substantively a law. There's been no case in Minnesota for over the last century since the Supreme Court of Minnesota first talked about the corporate counsel rule and explained why it's important as a policy matter. There's been no case that has done anything other than extend it to other business entities. I just want to point out too, in the last quarter of a century, there's been an increased proliferation of different types of business entities operating in this space. So it's not uncommon at all to have one LLC that's a parent company to an enterprise, to have numerous LLCs that are subsidiaries that own each individual parcel of land for that enterprise, and to have a separate LLC that manages the property. And in that situation, you actually have corporate agents of corporate principals sometimes, and it's very confusing to the public. And the reason that it matters, and the reason that I said it at the start of my comments that it's not abstract or theoretical, is that there are, you know, 6,000 people in 2017 showed up facing eviction in the district court of Hennepin County. And for them, dealing with non-attorney agents is not a pleasant experience often. Those folks aren't trained in the law. There's a class of them that make it their business to be hired agents to go to court. So they're not agents in the true sense of the word of, hey, I work for this rental prize, I'm an in-house property management agent. They're actually hired to go to court, sort of as bill collectors. And they don't know the facts of the lease and tenancy. They certainly don't know the health and safety laws that protect vulnerable tenants in many cases. They don't know rent and utility billing restrictions. They don't know the laws surrounding basic leasing practices. And they don't really know a lot about how to properly commence and pursue litigation in the district courts of our state, including in the two largest district courts in our state. And so we see that every day. We can't, you know, we have limited resources. We're forced to turn away 60% of eligible people who come to us for help. We help as many people as we can. And we've, you know, over the last quarter of a century, essentially had a standing challenge to the practice of non-attorneys appearing for corporate entities in the district court of Hennepin County. And frankly, we've either settled or won over 95% of those cases. The ones we haven't, we've used the district court judge review process outlined in these rules and either settled or successfully litigated the case further. We've been denied appellate review on this issue. We had a case five years ago in the summer of 2013 where a corporate landlord that appeared without counsel retained counsel in an appeal and then intentionally mooted the appeal to deny us appellate review. So I just want to be really clear. The compromise rule that is before you right now would substantively alter longstanding common law in Minnesota about corporate entities at a time when they proliferate in this space. And, you know, the people that are facing eviction have a property interest, a superior possessory interest until a court rules otherwise. And it's a fundamental due process issue for vulnerable people facing the loss of essentially foundational stability, which is a huge policy matter at a statewide level. I mean, the governor not only has a task force on affordable housing preservation, as referenced by Mr. Liljunkquist, but has also promoted and convened a inter-agency task force to look at fundamental housing stability. Local governments, including the city of Minneapolis and Hennepin County, have looked closely at doing everything they can to limit evictions and to protect the fundamental, extend fundamental protections and protect the fairness of the proceeding. And this proposal, which would explicitly authorize non-attorney agents, would not meet what I think the court's goals are, which are to present a fair and just process with people who, to ensure that vulnerable people have the right type of process when they face the loss of their home. So I thank you for the opportunity to share these remarks and I'm happy to answer any questions if people have them.
Any questions for Mr. Schaefer? Tim?
I have a question. It looks like under the current rule and the proposed change to the rule that an individual, so an individual owns rental property, the individual can go into court pro se, the individual could hire an attorney. But as I look at the rule, the individual has the option to hire a non-attorney agent to represent the individual landlord at a hearing. Do you have thoughts one way or another as to whether that's a good idea or a bad idea?
My thought about that is, I don't know if it's necessarily a good idea or a bad idea, but I think that's the original intent of the rule, was that sole proprietorships, small landlords who hold title individually, who do not make business judgments to form corporate entities to limit liability, can make those types of decisions. If they want to, they can appear individually or designate agents under this rule. That's what I believe the rule was, has always been intended to provide, was those folks that opportunity if they wish to do it. Of course, there's also a separate line of cases, in Ray the Conservatorship of Rybel, which is a case from 2004, which talks about how you can't, an attorney in fact is not authorized to practice law as an attorney at law. An attorney in fact can hire a lawyer as if they were the grantor in the document that created that relationship. But, so there's some tension there, but the intent of this rule was really to cover those unincorporated landlord situations. And so, you know, I think that's a business decision that a particular landlord can make depending on what their broader business plans are in terms of forming liability-limiting entities.
Of the 6,000 people who faced eviction in Hennepin County last year, how many did your office either represent or provide legal advice to, either through Mid-Minnesota Legal directly or as part of the Housing Court project with VLN?
That's a great question. So statewide, I just saw data that roughly 50% of landlords are represented by counsel statewide in Minnesota, at least as of 2016. 3% of tenants have counsel of record in those cases. This year, right now, real time, the best information that I can provide the committee is, in Hennepin County, we've, we're actually expanding our efforts to try to represent more people in court because we see it as a vital community need. And we are on pace in 2018 to represent just under 10% of all defendants facing eviction in Hennepin County. That means in-court representation, which is by far the highest figure that we will ever have achieved. It's because we're putting three and a half attorneys in place just to do those cases. As far as more limited representation, limited scope, help, like advice and information only and some pleading assistance, we at Mid-Minnesota Legal Aid in total touch approximately 20 to 25% of all cases that involve evictions in Hennepin County District Court. Volunteer Lawyers Network probably bumps the figure up to maybe around, I'm just trying to do quick math in my head, probably makes it between 30 to 40% of all people who face eviction in Hennepin County get some level of advice, but that might just be a 10-minute advice chat with somebody right before court, where we're not able to insert ourselves into the discussions that go on with the hired non-attorney agents who, you know, populate the hallways down at Hennepin County District Court. And so we can't really make, I mean, we can tell people what their rights are in a very short amount of time, but they're under a lot of pressure in that moment. So they, interesting information and statistics that we got recently is that about 80% of the people were serving through our expanded eviction representation work. They're in court facing eviction for the first time ever. And the attorneys, the 50% of them, the 50% of landlords have attorneys. And then most of the rest of the landlords have agents, either in-house or hired outside agents. They've been to court many times, most of them. So there's an inequity issue that comes into play. And frankly, we'd rather have landlords counseled by attorneys who are bound by the ethics of the rules of our profession and also who are not bound by the ethics of duty to corporate entities, which is what Nicolet Restoration versus Turnham cautioned the public against. And that's why the Supreme Court has held fast on that principle of law in Minnesota for over a century.
Phil?
We have one or two, certainly in Hennepin, referees who have done this longer than other referees. What's their attitude on this, on the rule change? You know?
Well, you know, referee Hutchison presided in housing court for several years, so he could perhaps speak to that. You know, in Hennepin County, the referees generally permit non-attorney agents to appear for corporate entities over our objection. And like I said, it's an issue we've been denied appellate review multiple times by different corporate landlords who've intentionally mooted, by essentially agreeing to lose after they won, to make sure that there's not a live dispute that can go up to the Court of Appeals so that we can get appellate review of the issue.
Any other questions or comments?
I have one. Sorry. Go ahead. Obviously Drew is my boss. I'll just let you know that. But the distinction...
No one is Galen's boss.
We'll note that he gave excellent testimony. It's very helpful, yada, yada.
The distinction that the compromise is trying to make is between the initial appearance and an evidentiary hearing. But I did note that there were comments from, I think, the group that does mediation. They often run into problems with that. Can you speak a little bit about the distinction in your mind between an initial appearance and an evidentiary hearing, if there is one?
Well, you know, one fear I have based on the structure of the proposed rule is that it will create a perverse incentive for non-attorney agents to actually exert more pressure and leverage at the earlier point when, you know, they're going to basically get their marching orders that we're going to try, and, you know, 93% of these cases are about allegedly unpaid rent. Okay? So they're going there to collect rent and they're going to probably, my guess is, with this rule structure, there's going to be more pressure at that. There's already a lot of pressure on the defendants in eviction cases in those negotiations with people who know the system, tell them things like, the court can only do this, so this is the deal on the table. This is a, this is a good deal for you. We hear those cases and stories oftentimes after it's too late in our offices down at court where we're giving people advice. I have a feeling that this rule structure would increase that sort of pressure in terms of the non-attorney agents trying to get the deal done to prevent a future evidentiary hearing, which is often what happens. When we're in the courtroom, almost all the time, we raise a legal issue. A person not trained in the law, trained in bill collection essentially, and can, they can write and use the English language and file a court case and show up and they can do their specialized, we, let's set up a payment planner, this is the time I'll give you. But when we raise any legal issue that's, you know, and there are lots of them that can come up in these cases, they don't know anything about that. So the cases get scheduled unnecessarily for additional hearings. Or sometimes we win motions to dismiss and they get thrown out. And that's not a good use of judicial resources. It's inefficient. I think the judiciary has a goal of efficiency. And I know the judiciary has a values justice. I mean, and that's not justice. So that's my concern with the rule structure, is that that upfront negotiation process that often goes on on those calendars will be, increase the pressure on the defendants with people who are, who are not bound by the rules of our profession and people who owe one duty to the corporate entity that they are representing in the case.
David, do you have a comment?
Your comment just making me wonder, does the Federal Fair Debt Collection Practices Act apply to them?
That's been an issue. There was a, there's been recent litigation around that issue and if I, I believe that there are some landlord attorneys and non-attorney agents that are trying to use debt validation notices and so forth to comply with some of the provisions of the Fair Debt Collection Practices Act. We've certainly seen similar outfits and had litigation against them in other venues and consumer debt collection venues.
Comments or questions for Mr. Schaefer? All right. Very good. Thank you very much. Somebody raised their hand.
Could I ask one more question?
Jason, yeah.
So my understanding, and maybe it's changed since I've been there, but Legal Aid and the Housing Court project with VLN occupy three offices right outside the courtrooms where these eviction actions are held. You've told us that you find a way to have a piece of about a quarter or more of the cases, of the eviction cases in Hennepin County. And my recollection is that even when your office isn't representing people, they're often assisting them in filing answers to raise a number of these legal issues. Are you suggesting that the systemic presence of your office isn't enough to deter some of the venality that you're suggesting that these non-attorney agents are going to engage in?
I think the opposite is actually true. I think that our presence there does deter a lot of bad conduct. You know, there are just some issues that come up again and again and again. And because the cases move fast and people's decision matrices change quickly too, the, for all sorts of reasons, these issues don't get, you know, percolate up to the appellate level of review. But as far as we make, you know, we want to do more. We know there's a lot of people that could use our help that we're not reaching right now. You know, there's three portals to get in to see an attorney and maybe get 15 minutes of advice if they're really lucky to have somebody pick up their case and represent them. But for every case we pick up, we know there's more people we could be helping. And I think being there does deter bad conduct, but it doesn't, the volume of cases is such that there's a lot of things that we will just not be able to control. We accept that reality right now with our current level of resources.
Questions or comments? Thank you. Elizabeth Sauer?
Thank you. Am I, I'm never sure with these things. So my name's Elizabeth Sauer. I'm a supervising attorney at Central Minnesota Legal Services. We are a legal services organization. We also practice in Hennepin County as well as Anoka County. And our office also has offices which are co-located with MMLA in St. Cloud and Wilmer. I am here because I would like to just speak a little bit more about how this proposed change would impact my clients. I agree with Mr. Schaefer that this proposed change would be a substantive change to the law as it exists. And it is essentially carving out a very specific exception to the rule laid out in Nicolet Restoration for two counties of the state. And I don't think that there's a good reason for that. Looking through the comments that have been made, I think there's kind of three reasons why it's being suggested that this is a good idea. The first is that, you know, these are summary proceedings. They're, you know, they're, they're not complicated. They're, they're less important. They're like conciliation court. And I think that that suggestion does a profound injustice to my clients and, and the way that this impacts their lives. For my clients, an eviction is a terrifying situation. It's not a simple, you know, it might look like a simple dispute over $500 or $1,000 in rent, but it's far more than that. It's, you know, it's homelessness. It's, you know, disrupting their, their kid's education, having to change schools. It might be a disruption in medical care. You know, frequently domestic violence is a major reason why people might end up in housing court or end up with an eviction. Having that eviction on their record is something that they will carry with them and which will make it exponentially more difficult for them to find replacement housing. So this is not, you know, a small deal. Also, I think it's really important to point out that unlike conciliation court, this, these eviction proceedings are district court. Conciliation court cases, you know, are handled much more quickly. And, but if something goes wrong, if either party is not satisfied with the results, they have the right to a trial de novo in district court, wherein all of the protections that are in place through the judicial system will be, will be enforced and those rules will be applied. Housing court is the one and only fact finder that is available to my clients in an eviction I think it's also been suggested that, you know, because of the cases that are simple, the ones that settle at first appearances, those are not as important to have an attorney present on behalf of a corporate entity. And I also, I disagree with that. Just because a case settles at a first appearance does not mean that it was a simple case where in fact the tenant did owe the rent and does not have any legal defenses. It might, it might mean that, but it might just as easily mean that a terrified tenant who was facing what they believed was certain and immediate homelessness decided to take a way out that was presented to them by the person that they're negotiating with. I can't tell you how many times I have spoken to clients after they've been to court and after they've entered into a settlement agreement at a first appearance and tell me, you know, and maybe it wasn't a good agreement and I ask them why, or they just tell me, well, they told me that I had to do this. They told me that I had, you know, they told me that this is how it had to happen. And when I first started practicing, I used to assume that clients who use that kind of lane, George, were referring to, well, that's what the judge or the referee were telling them they had to do, but that's not the case. I've learned that many times they're talking about the, the agent who was there negotiating on behalf of their, on behalf of their landlord. They view this, they almost rely on these people for legal advice to tell them exactly what's going to happen in court. And they're not always getting the right information. And again, when you have that kind of consequence hanging over your head, it's not always easy to clearly make those kinds of decisions well. And I think that, you know, the third reason seems to be that, well, you know, maybe we trust some of the agents who appear in housing court on behalf of corporations. You know, maybe some of them are nice people, some of them are very honest people. And I, and I don't dispute that, but it's not universally true. And I think it's important to remember that this proposed change to allow non-attorney agents to appear on behalf of corporations kind of opens a Pandora's Box because it creates this class of agents, which is completely unregulated by the judicial system. You can't even track which cases these advocates are, or agents are involved in because they're not parties. You can't look them up in MNSIS. They're not attorneys of record. You can't look them up in MNSIS. And these are people who have an enormous amount of sway in what happens in those settlement And there's no way, there's absolutely no way. So to regulate that once we've allowed these, you know, an attorney at least has obligations of professional responsibility, which can be enforced and they can be held accountable to the court. You know, there's been a recent fairly widely-publicized case in housing court. I was not involved in it, but where a significantly, a landlord was sanctioned a significant amount of money because of misstatements that were made to the court. That case actually, I believe, resulted in the withdrawal of an attorney as a result of those statements that were made to the court. And, you know, I think that was, it was discussed in the newspapers and as sort of a sensational and shocking event. And it was, in many ways, but, you know, for me or for my clients, I don't think it was particularly surprising. I'm not here to say that, you know, lay ad agents are bad people. I'm not here to say that they're good people. They're, it's just that we have, if we're going to allow them to be appearing in court and serving in the role of an attorney, they have no obligation to the court. They only owe an obligation to that corporate entity. And that is harmful to the judicial process and that is harmful to my clients. So, thank you very much.
Any questions or comments?
I have a question. As I was reading the materials, unless I misinterpreted it, it looked like there was a public housing agency that came out in support of some version of the proposed change. My question to you is, do you have any...
My question to you is, do you have any thoughts as to whether the rule should be different if the landlord is a public entity as opposed to a private entity?
I, I guess I do, Your Honor, and, or, I'm sorry, I'm used to- Kristin Ferris is actually here from the Minneapolis Public Housing Authority, so I think she's going to also ask to speak to you. I know I've had conversations with her in the past about this. And I personally, I don't think that it's, it's any different. I think for the NPHA, I recognize that they have maybe some logistical issues to work out, but I think those could be worked out in ways other than having lay agents making these appearances. I think that, you know, perhaps the use of a lay agent in conjunction with an attorney who is also present might be an effective way to, to address that issue. But again, there are many, at NPHA, there are many very lovely people who are agents who are appearing in court. And, but, you know, they're not going to be around forever and we don't know who the next set of people are going to be. And to allow them to, you know, negotiate and sign off on settlement agreements and to act essentially as unlicensed attorneys in court is, is a risk that should not be taken for the reasons addressed in Nicolet Restoration.
Any other comments or questions? All right, very good, thank you. And did somebody else want to speak? Is it Ms. Harris? Ferris, okay. For our record, would you state your full name, smogging your last name, and tell us who you represent?
Absolutely. My name is Kristin Ferris, last name is F.E.R.R.I.S.S. And I am the staff attorney with Minneapolis Public Housing Authority. So I wanted to start by saying thank you for the opportunity to make comments today. As some of you may know, and we did lay this out in our written comments regarding this rule, but NPHA is really in a unique position in Minnesota in that, in our size and our governance. We are the largest housing authority in the state. We have nearly 6,000 residents that we serve through our public housing buildings. So that's where we are, the actual landlord for the residents. Further, we're self-insured, and that makes us a little bit unique to St. Paul, where they are more in conjunction with the city. Our office is, our legal department, which is comprised of three attorneys, myself, our general counsel, and our assistant general counsel. So we're a relatively small legal department. We're representing NPHA on all litigation matters in-house. Whereas with St. Paul, I know that they use it through city attorneys. So our limited resource, our resources are really limited compared to St. Paul in that respect. So we, as our letters suggest, we are in support of the proposed changes to the rule. We've been extremely invested in the proposed amendments thus far. As you'll see, I think we, we might have had the most letters that we've submitted, we had three. And it's because this is going to have, the, the impacts of this rule would have an extreme effect on our agency and the extremely low-income individuals that we serve in Hennepin County. Basically, what this proposed rule does is it just affirms what our current practice is. It doesn't change anything from what we currently do. We do have two in-house agents who represent NPHA on non-payment of rent cases, the first appearance cases only. They have been working in the position for several years. They're very familiar with the cases themselves, they're following them through from the first time we noticed that the rent is behind. Quite frankly, they're more familiar with the cases than I would be to go in there at that first appearance. They also are able to settle almost all of their cases. We have about 20 filings a month, give or take, that we'll go through out of our 6,000 residents. Almost all of those settle. It leads to maybe one to two evictions per month. And most of those are because of default cases, not because there wasn't, we weren't able to reach a settlement. Also, it's very rare that it will go to a trial. Obviously, sometimes it will go to a trial, in which case we do have one of the attorneys in our office, usually myself, representing NPHA at that, at that juncture. The main reason that we support this rule is kind of twofold. The first is that we think that prohibiting agent representation entirely would be exceedingly burdensome, that it would be costly for the reasons that were laid out by Minnesota Multi-Housing Association, and that it'd be largely unnecessary. From our experience, we haven't seen or heard of, at least with our agents, any problems that might come up that have been suggested otherwise with agents. And we think that it's, goes against the spirit of Housing Court, the pilot program's mission, which is to promote expediency and to promote efficiency in these primarily summary proceedings. Yes, it does carve out an exception for Hennepin and Ramsey County, but all of the rules of 601 through 612 do that. And so that's, that's one of our bases is why we support the, why we think that changing to prohibit agent representation would be extremely harmful. The other one is on a more personal note, as Ms. Suter, or, sorry. Have pointed out, yes, we, it's more on a personal note, that we, we personally would have an extremely hard time adjusting to not allowing agents to appear in Housing Court. Given the size of our legal department and the restrictions that we have, it would require us to use money that were given by the federal government to essentially outsource and bring in higher outside counsel to represent some of our cases in court. The reason I say that, and this is kind of outlined in one of our letters, but is Housing Court has, says that if we have, that they only allow a certain number of cases for, per agent. And if that continues to be true also for, at least in Hennepin County, this was an agreement that we've struck with them. If that continues to be true with an attorney, that would mean that if we're having 20 cases, we could have to have two to three attorneys present at the hearing itself. That is our entire legal department at that point. And so it does affect us on a personal note. And especially with the continual decrease in federal funding that NPHA has experienced, it takes away that money from other resources that we would otherwise be able to use it towards. And I think that that is mostly my summary as to why we ask that this committee adopts the rule as it is, why we support the rule as it is. And I thank you for the opportunity, I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Questions for Ms. Ferris?
So the, the practice predates my time with NPHA, but it's not a written rule, it's my understanding that the, it was an agreement struck between the two and the purpose of it is for expediency. You know, if you have one person hearing, meeting with 20 different people, it's really going to slow down the process versus if you limit the number of people.
Other questions? Let me see, go ahead.
Is it your position then that the Nicolet County case does not apply to this situation? Or that this committee should adopt a rule different?
Our, our interpretation is that the committee should adopt a rule different than Nicolet County because, and again, it's because if you want to say that the rules for, that this would create an exception for Hennepin and Ramsey County, I think that all of the Housing Court rules already create that exception. That's, that was the point of the pilot program.
The other comments, Galen?
I think you said about 20 cases a month, and I really don't know something. And that most of them settle. Are those mostly non-payment cases, or do they include breach and non-payment?
Yeah, thank you for that clarification, yeah, so-
Non-payment's a breach, but other breach-
Yeah.
... is a tenancy.
I appreciate you calling that out. So our agents only handle our non-payment of rent cases. If there's any other, any other forecause cases, those are handled directly by our legal department, most likely me appearing at that first appearance.
If it were the initial appearance, you would be there on those other cases?
Yes. Correct.
Questions?
Do you think there's a way to craft some sort of rule that would create one rule for a public entity and one for a private?
That was something that we had originally proposed before the, when the, when, in the initial stages of the proposing, or discussions regarding Rule 603, is, that's not something that, we, we're fine with that. If there's a carve-out exception for a public entity, I think that that's fine. And we absolutely would support that. It's just that that's not the direction that the amendments seem to take. And we're comfortable with the direction that they did take.
Other questions?
Yeah.
All right, very good, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else here that wishes to be heard? All right, very good, thank you very much.